It is five oh seven PM on Wednesday, September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. I'm calling this meeting to order. We will start with the proposed two thousand and twenty-five budget presentation and then we'll move on to the candidate forum. And there'll be an introduction, Q and A from the executive director and the audience in the period for public expression. And then adjournment, and then we take a break and then we start our one hundred minute meeting. Okay.
Yeah, that's it. I don't know why this is doing. What's doing that you are trying?
Uh, can you grab, Ellie, because it's doing the same thing again? Oh, there we go. I did it today. I'm as smart as I look. All right, so the budget hearing. Um, we're gonna go through this fairly quickly. It's it's sort of short and sweet. But um, I'm happy to answer any questions as we go along. And then we'll get to the important part, which is of course grilling our prospective trustees. Okay, so for two thousand and twenty-five, our proposed income uh, to be raised by taxes is two million, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Two million, four hundred and fifty-seven hundreds, three hundred. It's that number there. Why am I having trouble with my mouth today? Um, and then also another nine hundred and five thousand dollars for the mortgage on the building, which is uh, the debt service. Um, our tax levies are total of three point three six two million. Um, you can see that we have about thirteen thousand dollars in pilot and state aid. Yes, the state does care very deeply about levers. Um, and then our general library generated funds, uh, we're putting in approximately three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Um, for a total budget of about three point seven million dollars. Uh, dispersment salaries is about one point three million. Employee benefits is um, seven hundred and eighty thousand. Library materials and programs is two hundred and sixty-three thousand. Administrative and office expenses, two hundred and three, buildings and grounds, two hundred and eighty. Um, again, the debt service, and you can see the income numbers match the uh, dispersment numbers. The proposed tax levy increase is a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars. This increase is under the New York State mandated tax cap, so we will not be exceeding the cap this year. Um, and just to give you an idea of what that might cost you, if your home was assessed at a million dollars, it would be approximately about fifty a month or eighteen dollars for the entire year.
Outrageous.
Outrageous. So what uh, are your increases gonna get you this year? So we do see about twenty-four thousand dollars increase in library materials. This does include um, print books. Um, not everything is digital. We are increasing the number of print books in the collection and the money to print books because people do still like a book. Uh, but it also does include our digital downloads, which are ebooks, audiobooks, um, Canopy, which is documentaries and films, um, Hoopla, Lipster, which is magazines. So anything that is sort of a library material, but you get it electronically on your phone or tablet. Those are your digital downloads. Databases, so that uh, used to be called a thousand years ago, the Virtual Reference Collection. But those are all of the things like our online access to magazine, um, historic magazines or historic newspapers, to Consumer Reports, Ancestry, those types of things. And of course, to our ever-growing library of things. Uh, we had some fun at Carver Fest showcasing our library of things, specifically our metal detector, which uh, people were able to use down at Carver Fest. Library programming, we're seeing an increase of about nine thousand, six hundred dollars. That is for programs for all ages, stages, and interests. But as a result of our um, community survey, there was a big push for us to put more um, money and time into programs for adults. And so a lot of that is into the adult programming budget. Buildings and grounds, you see an increase of about thirty-eight thousand dollars. That is of course for the maintenance of the building, insurance, utilities, all of that, you know, goes up. Uh, I know it still feels like we just finished the renovation on this building, including the glow up, but uh, you know, uh, two thousand and sixteen was uh, eight years ago, almost nine years ago. And so in terms of uh, computer equipment or electronics, that might as well be thirty years. And um, of course, we are still doing tremendous amounts of maintenance as we limp along until we replace our HVAC system. Uh, so what does budget include? We kind of talked about this, uh, all of your library services. So research assistance, every time you pick up the phone, uh, and a helpful member of the staff is there to answer your questions or help you with your iPhone or your Android device, uh, public computers, printers and scanners, and faxes as well. Um, books and media, circulating museum passes, discount tickets, Wi-Fi devices, programs, films, concerts for children, teens, families, and seniors, downloadable books and audiobooks, newspapers, films, and magazines, uh, classes to use the computer and other new technologies, and perhaps most importantly, quiet spaces to think and. So does anybody have any questions? Okay, so just as a reminder, the budget vote trustee election is next Thursday, September twenty-sixth. Uh, voting hours are between two and eight PM. And uh, we hope to see you at the library. There is still time for you to visit Mary, the district clerk, at the school if you need to vote by absentee ballots. Uh, and if you need to do so, I would recommend you contact her directly and she can get that square of that for you. So now we have our trustee forum. So I'm gonna ask the candidates on the ballot to come up front and sit in one of these three hot seats.
Would it on me?
Uh, yes, if you do not have a name tag, please bring it with you. Um. No, I feel like I'm gonna put Anna between the uh, trustee. Just watch out for all of my words.
Dan is running again.
Dan is running again. So um, we have three at-large seats on the ballot for our election next Thursday, September twenty-sixth, from two to eight, yeah. Uh, and uh, all three candidates are running unopposed. We have Dan Black, who is currently seated on the board of trustees. We have a newcomer, a member of our community, Anna Skiboni. And we have Diane Deeger, who is the current board president, who is running for reelection as well. So we'll start with Dan. Dan, do you want to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure, um, I moved here about, uh, twelve ninety-nine, ninety-seven. Um, married local woman here in Jennifer and uh, raised a child here. Used the library a lot when I was little and as she got older. Worked in East Hampton for twenty years, this uh, place I work at, and consider myself a local.
Do you want to tell us um, why you decided to run for trustee again?
Um, because I've been enjoying the work that I've been doing the last three years and three years before that and helping to steward the library and see the things that are going on and help do things the way that I like.
Okay, um, let's see. Anna, you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're choosing to run for the board?
Um, well, I've lived here my whole life, as y'all know. Um, and um, the John Trimmer Memorial Library has played a huge part in my life and made me the bookworm, movie buff, theater buff that I am. And I'm running to spread that love of education and learning to as many people as possible.
Diane.
Just wanted to add, Anna was in elementary school. She was very diligent about borrowing and returning library books and. Always remember those who didn't, so.
Any late books?
No, I'm proud of Anna. Thank you.
Okay, so uh, we'll start, we'll start with Diane over here. Uh, what do you feel is the role of a library trustee?
Well, first and foremost, we are, we've been elected by the taxpayers of said purpose and we have a responsibility to be physically responsible with those numbers that she just showed. And we have, we are stewards of this building, its history, its contents, and we support the director and the staff to make this the most wonderful place it could possibly be. And it's pretty wonderful right now, so we want to maintain that.
Uh, Anna, same question.
I mean, Diane just put it so beautifully. I admire it. Um, but yeah, just reaching out to the community as well and and just sharing everything with. Spreading the word. Thank you. Yes.
Uh, Dan, I'm gonna ask you a different question.
Okay.
Um, please describe your relationship with the library. What services do you use the library for? What programs? Um.
Uh, so I've lately got into downloading audiobooks and books for my Kindle. So I use that service a lot. Um, I come here, I'm part of a book club, I do the graphic novel book club. Use the, bring your printer a couple of times. It's a nice quiet space too, if you want to work on that a couple of times, do using computers, research for things. Those are the kind of services I like to use.
Um, Anna, what initiatives or services do you think the library should consider providing that we maybe don't currently provide?
Um, well, I think we have to reach out to the young people because I don't know if y'all know about Book Talk. Do you know about that? It's just the book side of TikTok. And specifically in my demographic, we have a problem of just like having a book be a trend for a month or so, not even. And as soon as these trends show up, they disappear again. Um, which leads to a lot of, you know, books on the bookshelf that like, you know, you just bought to keep on the trend. And I feel like we need to have more of a social media presence to like, tell the kids like, there's a sustainable and much more affordable option and you can still stay on trend.
Diane, same question. Uh, sure, of course. What initiatives or services do you think the library should consider providing that we do not currently provide?
Valley parking.
She definitely go, thank you, we're gonna sign up.
Wow, great.
You know, I think we do, we're doing a great job and we've increased the services a lot. But the one thing that I see changing is people feel the need for community more so now than ever because I talk with people who've lived here a long time and on this street there are modest homes and they get sold, torn down, and the McMansion goes up, absentee owner. So now they don't have any community anymore where they live. And the library becomes a place where people can go to and see other people because you could walk your dog up and down, sunset, drive there and not see anyone you know. So building community is very important and growing. And I would imagine there are obviously a lot of new people in our community. I don't know how they're finding community, what they're doing. I'm only speaking with the older crowd, not myself.
Dan, same question.
Um, so it's a thing that I think that the initiative that I think is up getting into like the new uh, community, things like the makerspace and the podcasting. I know we started to do that, but I'd like to see like an expansion of that, that kind of stuff where people can express themselves creatively through the web.
Okay, um, let's see, what else? Um. Start with that, what initiative is. Um, Dan, if you could change one thing about the library, what would it be?
All right, so I've been saying this for years, right?
The executive director.
So the science fiction genre is mixed in with the regular fiction. I would like to see the science fiction section pulled out in its own section. That is the one thing that I would like to see, I could change.
Okay.
And then we won't get into fantasy too, but I won't push it.
Sure. I actually have an answer for you about that after this. Um, uh, Anna, if there's one thing about the library you could change, what would it be?
Well, I don't know all the ins and outs about it, and I'm sure there's things that could be updated. Um, I'm not sure. I'm gonna learn more and I'm excited to learn more and I'll get back to Anna.
Okay, Diane.
I would hire a valley park.
That's gonna be your answer. You know, that's not a bad idea. I should call our insurance agent and be like, what do you think about us valley parking cars?
The hospital needs to do it. I'm not sure if it's today. There's a sign that.
They do, yeah, they still.
For me, I'm in parking cars.
Well, each trustee will take a day.
The part of the agency about the doing, but where do you put the farm?
Yeah, yeah.
Details, details.
In the day.
Um, okay, so uh, it is banned book week. Um, and that is held annually during the last full week of September. Banned book weeks is a creative campaign that calls attention to challenged and banned books with challenges to materials in school and public libraries nationally and even recently in Suffolk County a couple of years ago with the Smithtown Library. What do you feel the role of a library trustee is in addressing materials challenges locally and on a state and national level? Dan.
Well, it's important to, ban books is an interesting thing because you're you're censoring. And that's a library, you don't want to be censoring materials. Everybody has a right to, to what they want. So the key is the balance between what is appropriate and what is censorship and sort of keep that balance. And, you know, there were certain libraries in years past who have gone and banned stuff that, you know, they got a lot of flack for. So I would think I'd like our library to make sure that we're like, keeping an open mind and being able to avoid censorship in terms.
Diane.
Well, you know, I've got full advantage of your having attended that conference with you where we spend some time learning how other libraries, how libraries should deal with this. You have to be ahead of everything. We mean, we have plan in place if we go for a program this challenge. So you have to be prepared. You have to have, you know, uniforms, everything in place. Uh, and then there are resources you can reach out to, Iowa, Bay L.A., we see them, and all this happens. And now there are many people who are taking a leadership role in being, you know, speakers about banned books and it's getting a lot of attention. And so also student groups who are advocates now for, you know, banning books. So I think in the last year or two, we've seen a lot of growth in that. Um, this is a place where people come and they can find anything in the world and they can learn about anything in the world. And it is not a library's place to deny anyone from seeking whatever they're looking for.
I completely agree with all of that. I just, it it's just, it seems so despicable to me to ban books just because that it means you're not mature enough to, you know, think from someone else's perspective. If you're banning To Kill a Mockingbird, you're not stepping into someone else's shoes and walking in them. Um, and exactly as Diane said, that the, a library should be there to have everything that someone is looking for. And if a school or somewhere else is banning books, then a library needs to be a refuge for them to learn.
Okay, um. Anna, we're gonna start with you. What do you think is the biggest challenge or opportunity facing our community and what role should the library play?
I think the community is ready to interact more with the library. It's, it's terrible that Canyon's Books is is closing down. Um, I don't know if they're relocating or anything, but they were holding the, the Read-a-thon every year. And like, there's different opportunities for us to bring those businesses up and then include everyone in it.
Diane.
Well, I think the, the main thing is that the library needs to be, it's no longer just a place that goes, needs to be a place with the physical resources. If you need, you know, to know stuff like taxes, like how to use your iPhone, you know, this is, it needs to be a place for knowledge and where you can go, not just to go get a book. Needs to be sort of a, a, a center for learning as opposed to just a book, a place to leave books.
Like center of the living.
Center of the living, right, exactly.
What they could do a good job.
Uh, Diane, that's a, same question.
Um, I think the only thing, a lot of people aren't still not aware of all the services they can get you, like the museum passes. But people don't go to the website. A lot of people are lazy, so they don't spend the time looking. And if there are technology questions, go to my link. We're so shocked that people, you know, find this at the library. But all our, everything's available online and you get emailed last. So I don't think there's any excuse for people not knowing. You just have to make the effort to look on the website or open your email. Um, I mean, we've increased our services so greatly and we will continue to. A society needs to evolve. Our community needs to evolve. But people are in a great place. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, uh, Stan, um, I think we already know the answer to this question, but uh, what is your favorite book or favorite genre to read and in what format do you prefer to view?
Um, well, I, I like to read science fiction and fantasy. Um, it's nothing like a good book, but I am not opposed to like reading it on my Kindle like on the train. So then, that being said, my favorite book is actually not a science fiction book.
Okay.
It is a book called The Wolf's Hour, which is about a werewolf, a German werewolf spy in Nazi Germany. And it's a fantastic book.
Uh, Anna, same question. What's your favorite book or genre and what format do you like to read?
My favorite book is Little Women by Louise Mayак. It's right, it's just the best and it was ahead of its time and it still applies to today. It's just, it's just perfect. Um, and I, I like it in hardcover. I just, I wish I could do audiobooks. It would really help things out, but I'm just not an auditory processor. It's just something that.
Okay, yeah.
I will read anything written by humorist David Segar. Um, you might not know this about me, or you might know, never from school, but I'm very interested in Japan. I speak Japanese. I teach Japanese. I'm not fluent, but I sort of get people started knowing. So I like reading books by young Japanese authors written in English, which is important. Uh, so that's one thing. And the other interest I have is in reading medical history and fiction and nonfiction about the plague. So I'm weird. I have been screened, but it's interesting. It's all good.
Right. Um, let's see, I'm gonna throw it, not to put anybody on the spot. Do you have any questions from our audience or from our, our board of trustees?
I haven't yet. Um, Diane and, and Dan know that, but you know. Um, so.
Know about the.
We have, I'm sorry, I'm soft speaker, but I. Um, so there's a personnel committee, a client's budget, contracts, and legal committee. Um, that's always chaired by the treasurer. Buildings and grounds, policy and long-range planning, outreach and public relations, um, National Park Board, um, and then there's an ADHOP. Do any of those committees sound like something you would be interested in and which one would it be?
Um, I think the, the public outreach one sounded best to me. Yeah.
Nice to know. Dan, which one would you like to be on?
I like buildings and.
Like Dan, buildings and.
I mean, I don't. My shorts have been on the financial.
Um, and Diane?
Well, since I've sat on all the committees this year as president, one right now, I couldn't answer that. I mean, they all. No, I, I really couldn't pick one for sure right now. I mean, they all worked well this year, did their jobs really effectively. Um, you know, maybe with this, that ADHOP scholarship.
Yes.
Okay, uh, anybody in the audience?
Yeah.
I think the question has probably been answered, but I would ask all of you, is there one particular project or issue that you would like to see accomplished in the next year? In the, in the next term, your HR.
Yeah, for sure, the H-bag.
That's my, that's, I'd like to get that done.
One of the domestic parking.
Well, I'm tired.
The building is making a new noise back here. I don't. It's the heater. No, it's not, no, no, it's the wind, it's the window heaters. Um, those heaters are exclusively to heat the windows so that they don't condense. No, they're, they're not very noisy. Okay, so um, I only have uh, one, one more. Yes, absolutely. Oh, that's right, sorry. H-back, anybody else? Anna and Diane.
To get a bigger social media presence.
Get the H-back. Who ordered that?
Michael.
My question, Anna, how do you intend, how would we reach the younger set, your generation, and get them more involved? You mentioned social media. What type of social media? Isn't that keeping people separated more? Uh, getting their phones and computers rather than getting involved in a library community itself?
I, like, the young people won't hear about it unless they see it on social media. So getting like Instagram, TikTok, that kind of thing is showing like how fun and cool it is here. Then it's like, oh, wait, the library's great. Let's go on down.
And you think people your age would become more engaged with that?
Yeah. Do you follow us on TikTok now? I don't have TikTok. I mean, I get it all by Instagram. Like, I don't.
So what is, what is it that we're doing to, I don't know, what do you want to say? We're doing something wrong or maybe that we could really be doing much better, you know, which media platform do you think that we really should be on?
What's the question?
Well, I'm, I'm just curious. Do you have a recommendation as to, you know, what? Uh, cause I'm not that familiar with whether it's TikTok or Instagram or anything else. All right, so what would you recommend that we do?
Like hopping on the different trends. There's like different audios or like different just visual things to do. Like for instance, right now there's a trend of like, like heads of either committees or places or whatever using Gen Z lingo to be, talk about how cool the place is. But different things like that to keep the library with it with the kids. See if I was on TikTok. I have to get one now. Thinking in the right direction.
Thank you. It is hugely important, especially among your generation, the young men. He's thinking the right way.
Yes, actually, Anna, are you prepared to be the ambassador for your generation?
Yeah, I can do that. Signing up for that, right?
That's gonna be a new committee.
Um, just, if everybody, everybody feels good, okay. Uh, just final thoughts. Uh, Diane, is there anything you would like voters to know about you before heading to the polls?
Heading to the polls, okay. You know, I think it's your first three years as being on the board are learning years, especially the first year, second, third, but finally, you know, you've got a good grasp on things. And then you just don't want to stop. Now you feel like I can continue going with this. I'm enormously passionate about libraries. I can remember getting my first library card. I remember one of those like, I felt empowered. Got me into the Magic Kingdom, and this is before Disney, like, Disney World existed. But the thrill of being able to go someplace and borrow something and being responsible for it. Of course, back then you had to return it in person, couldn't be new over the phone and you had to list for in the library. But, you know, I've run with the libraries and they're, you know, but they're just the most wonderful places in America. You know, I've run with the libraries, if they're not, you know, but they're just the most wonderful places in America. When anybody in, in any town, county has someplace to go. And we are so fortunate that we have a library that's well-funded. And it offers so much, cause not every library in America was given to libraries, so I'm very proud to be there. I just wanna keep it going, I don't do this.
Um, I'm super excited for this opportunity, first of all, thank you all so much for giving me this opportunity. And, um, I just, I love this library so much and I don't know everything about all the ins and outs. But I, I look forward to learning and being able to, to help however I can in this beautiful, magical place.
Um, the one thing I wanna say is that I have sort of a library background, because my mother is a director for local library of state. And as a kid, I went to that library, you know, all, every day it was open. And did homework or hung out, so I'm, I, I appreciate libraries immensely.
Um, if there are no other questions. Um, I think Diane can entertain a motion to close the hearing. And then I think we can take a ten minute break while we reset the room for our board meeting.
Is this kind of the swimsuit competition?
I don't have a talent.
Alright, so do you wanna, have somebody make a motion?
I made a motion. I make a motion, yeah.
All in favor?
Alright, thank you all.
Thank you.
And call the next meeting to order.
It is five fifty-three PM on Wednesday, September eighteen, twenty twenty-four. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees to order. Okay, we'll start with a period of public expression, is there anybody Republican who would like to make any comments? Other questions? Okay.
No one's online?
No. That is true, they cannot.
Oh, they can't? I thought they could.
Yeah.
No.
Ask them, oh.
No, there's, there's a.
Open meeting.
It's, it's related to open meetings law, I know there are certain entities that don't follow open meetings law, but, um. We have a policy and I'll get you a copy of it, um, it's also on our website, which explains, uh, use of video recording. Uh, at public meetings. That's very well noted, um, thank you, New York State.
Okay, on to, on meeting minutes, I hope everyone had a chance to read the minutes that. Lisa prepared for us, can I get a, is anyone any questions about the minutes? Before we get a motion.
I would move to approve them.
Okay.
One second.
All in favor?
I abstained, because I wasn't here for the last meeting.
You're abstaining?
I'm abstaining.
But did you read them?
I did, but I can't.
This'll be a quiz. Okay, a report from the friends.
Uh, the friends met last Thursday, they're very excited about their, uh, meet friends. Uh, event, which is coming up in November. Uh, it's, this is first Saturday in November, uh, it's going to be a presentation by Catherine Tremblay, our local archivist. And we're gonna show off some of the cool things in our archives, and then it will be followed by, um, coffee and, uh. You know, cookies, uh, light fare. In the program room, to sort of meet the friends and learn about what friends do.
That's great.
Treasurer's report.
Okay.
Take it away, Elliot.
Take it away, alright. Uh, end of August, uh, we have more than enough to cover expenses for the rest of the fiscal year. Without touching the cushion, which is good, because we're gonna start spending some of the cushion on some other stuff, as I'll tell you a little bit later. Uh, moreover, we were down just a hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars compared to twelve months ago. Uh, despite the glow up, so we're somehow absorbing glow up. I mean, we, it's possible we will absorb the glow up by the end of this fiscal year. I can't promise it, but it's possible. And it's wonderful, if you look at August, uh, two, twenty twenty-four column, so you see what we have left in the, uh, in the resources. Uh, in the active accounts. Just a little over two million. And, uh, in investments, as you see, we've gone up a little bit since last month. We're up now to three nine, three five, eight two nine in investments. Uh, so we're getting close to four million, which is wonderful, and the total of, uh, current funds and investments is over six million. Now, six, oh two six, one oh eight, it's down a little bit from last month, but that's typical. And this will continue for the rest of the year, we will be dropping a little bit, because we don't have a lot of income coming in at this point, and we have expenses every month. Uh, but the decrease is not too great. Okay, that's really, as far as the general picture, the financial activity for the actual month of August was really very sweet. I mean, we had very modest expenses, two fifty-five, two twenty-seven. And, uh, good income, uh, invest, investments brought in nearly twenty-five thousand dollars last month. And we had a major gift from Gene Hill, which was the leading element in a hundred and fifteen thousand, six fifty, six sixty-seven in contributed income. Of course, that's earmarked for a special project, but it's money, you know, it's a real contribution. So again, these, uh, we've been doing well with contributions this year, and Au, and it really made a big difference in August. As far as where we are and year to date in relation to the budget, we're continuing to be on target, we're two-thirds of the way through the year. Which is sixty-six point sixty-six percent of the year, and we've spent sixty-six point sixty-nine percent of the budget. So that's about as close as you can get.
That's amazing.
Um, this is beginning to sound like a broken record, but. Uh, we, we keep looking at these overages, materials and program, it is leveling off now. It was worrisome maybe three or four months ago, but now it appears that it's leveling off, and we're probably gonna be fine in that area. Um, cause it's now at seventy-five percent, which isn't that much more than a percentage of the year. Administrative expenses at eighty-five percent of the budget already, and B and G is well over a hundred, a hundred and twenty-six percent. But all of those are being offset by other areas and by, uh, strong performance in financial income and contributions. Uh, you look at this contributions, I mean, we have a thousand percent compared to what we anticipated in the budget. And you never know when you're budgeting, you don't know what to budget, it's, it's always, you know, a guess, but the fact is, it's, it's coming in strong.
So a large part of that contributions was the gene health?
Yeah, well, yeah, for sure, sure, but I mean, this, that's why it's jumping out to such a high percentage. But we had other big gifts this year, which is why it's, you know, it's up there, I mean, it's, it's been a great year for, for large gifts.
Yes, we, we've had a couple of, um, donations from, uh, people's estates, so, uh, I think. Diane Sasso's estate paid out this year, um, Jean's has as well.
Yeah. And I like to think that, that, you know, the emphasis that, like, you've been talking up now for, you know, more than a year on this emphasis on estates. Having more of a presence on the website and giving people the idea, you know, it, it's, it's working apparently, which is great. Uh. Let's see, in terms of, uh. Oh, unpaid bills at this point, that, which is part five, the bill payment list, you see, it's about, about a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Hundred sixteen, hundred seventeen, that's a fairly average amount of, of bills that were incurred and have not, have not been paid yet. So that, that doesn't throw us off in terms of where we stand on the fiscal year, the payroll details are pretty straightforward. Uh, nothing special this month, it's all pretty straightforward, any questions on any of this?
A nice concise presentation. So, um, can I get a motion to approve the treasury report?
I saw move.
All in favor? Oh, I will thank you, Margaret, uh, the warrants, the warrants.
Okay, and I have Michael and Dan?
Yep.
Alright. Okay, so, um, I just wanted to, uh, again, talk about how crazy we, we were this summer. Uh, we finished strong with our programs, we had our end of summer reading finale. Uh, which included a splash pad that I think all of the staff wanted to splash in, but. We, we maintained decorum and stayed in the library. Um, we also had a great concert with homegrown string band, uh, and an evening art lecture with Dan Weldon. Uh, Tumbleweed Tuesday has arrived and we've, we're not as quiet as we usually are in September, which is a wonderful thing. But also, we're, we're working on putting the library back together, um, getting things sort of. Now that we have a little bit of breathing room, um, getting things reorganized and, and doing all the things that we, we put off. Um, because summer is all hands on deck. Uh, we were closed Wednesday, September eleventh for our annual AED and CPR training. Um, we also were, um, took the opportunity from the close the entire day. To discuss vision, values, strategic planning priorities and goals as part of our process for the library's strategic plan. Um, and the board's gonna meet to do that in, um, in October. Uh, and Anne will tell you what your homework is as chair of, of that committee. Um, when we talk about committee reports, uh, HVAC is progressing, we will talk about that under, um, new business. Um, as you all know, I've shared with you correspondence from our neighbors at, um, Sixth Union Streets. I think it might be easiest for us to discuss all that when we discuss HVAC under, under new business. Um, because it all sort of goes together. Uh, I did send you all an updated sound report at like two o'clock today. I got it at like one forty-five from Sean, had a couple of follow-up conversations with him and then sent it to you. Uh, and I will go over all of that with you, um, which will answer a lot of the questions in our neighbors', uh, correspondence with you. Um, I'm happy to report, uh, this year we received coverage in the local paper before our, um, budget vote. And, uh, candidate forum, uh, which I was excited about, uh, the autumn newsletter is out. Rachel has, um, moved out of the area, so she was laying out our newsletter for us. Um, but now is not, so I didn't this, this season, um. But I do wanna point out, cause I think it's important, that, uh, we have more newsletter, letter translated into Spanish than we have before. We actually have two pages translated into Spanish, uh, three, if you count the budget information. Um, as, as an effort to, um, be more welcoming to our library users. Who are native Spanish speakers as part of that strategic, um, planned community survey. Uh, those individuals who took the survey in Spanish said that the newsletter is where they get their information. So we're working on making sure that all of, as much as we can of that newsletter is also in Spanish. Um, trying to think, uh, Wanda and I explored interest rates for savings accounts and money markets outside of DIME. If you remember, Al Koster had recommended that, um, and to park enough cash to float payroll somewhere. Um, and then also, uh, potentially to create an account. Um, where once our cap, capital project, our HVAC project starts, that money would come out of a separate account, not our operating account. Which will help with some of those wacky buildings and grounds numbers, uh. Because right now, everything flows through the one operating account, uh, so the, do you wanna talk about this, Elliot? Do you want me to talk about it?
Well, yeah, I was gonna mention that, you know, when we talk about the committee.
Oh, that's right.
But, you know, from the point of view of, of the financial aspect of this, basically where we're, we're funding these things, that we're, we're going to take. Funds out of, out of DIME that are now part of the cushion, set put a hundred thousand dollars in, in a Capital One savings account. Which will protect payroll in the event of a interruption at dawn. And then the, and then the other piece of it is, we're gonna take two hundred thousand dollars out of the cushion and put that in an account with Morgan Stanley. Now, both of these will be somewhere between four and four point five percent, we don't know how much. I, I didn't specify on the, uh, uh, the other thing I was gonna announce was that we, we had some reinvestment, I'll talk about that later. But yeah, both of these investments look really good, I mean, the rates are, are, are good. So just even if the money just sits there, it's still gonna be earning significantly more than it was as part of the cushion. You know, like at least four percent, which is gonna be good, um, cause we found out, um. Kelly, you know, gave me the first bill on HVAC, it's four hundred and forty, four, four hundred and forty thousand dollars for the training equipment. We don't have to pay it until the spring, but, you know, we're facing that bill. So we gotta prepare, and also, like, I, I agree, it's gonna make a, a difference in the, the way our accounts are more transparent. Because it'll be easier to follow, you know, where we're making these giant, you know, moves of money, uh, if it's in a capital account. So we'll just, we'll fund it and then we'll spend it, and then we'll fund it and we'll spend it through that account, you know, keep better records over this time goes by. We got through the, we got through the, uh, glow up without doing that.
Yes.
But, and like I said, at this point, we've absorbed the losses pretty well, but we're not gonna be able to absorb, you know, a couple million dollars in loss on HVAC. Uh, and so it's really important that we track it, we know exactly where the money went. Yeah.
Alright, um, and then also, uh, as I had, um, mentioned here, but it has been passed. We went to Harbor Fest, we had a great time, they put us next obvious, uh, which was, you know, I was there for that. Um, and, uh, it was, um. We always do a silly Taylor Swift-inspired TikTok at, um, Harbor Fest, uh, so. That's, that's on the internet forever. Yes, uh, so there, there we are, um, and let's see, that is about it. I do wanna mention that, um, I did go to a legislative priorities meeting with the, uh, library directors. In, um, Senator Colombo's district, um, and we just expressed to him how important library funding is. How important it is for New York State to join all of the other states in protecting libraries and librarians against, uh, challenges. Uh, and book bans, and, um, I set him straight when it came to challenges. So, um, he might be scared of me now. We're, we're not sure. And that's, that's really, uh, it's the personnel report, is the personnel report. Um, and then also, when we look at statistics, I do wanna draw your attention to, uh, one, one number. Uh, if you go all the way down to the bottom, while we talk about data transferred, which is in terabytes. Um, you'll see, it's like stupid high, um, for August, two terabytes is a tremendous amount of data transferred. Um, five hundred, half a terabyte is, um, actually us Chromecast day. To our digital displays, so we are the, nobody's mining crypto. Um, it's, some of it is patron use, we have a lot of people, um, who, who are doing business here. They're on, you know, the different work from home platforms like Slack or whatever the case may be. But half a gig is, was us Chromecasting to our displays, so, um, do not be alarmed. I'm not, I'm sorry, not half a gig, half a terabyte. So, uh, if we remove that from that number, we're at one point five terabytes, which tracks for, for August.
So why would we wanna remove any?
Um, just because, I mean.
We're using it, right?
We're using it.
So it's, that's an accurate.
It is, I just didn't want you, you know, when you look at something that's normally in the low ones, is suddenly.
In July, we're using, where we.
Yes.
But in June, we're not, or have we been using, doing?
We, we've changed. Well, we updated our Chromecast, but also, um, we also started in July. Animating the slides, and so they're not actually like picture slides, it's tiny videos. So the amount of, of data producing is better.
So July was where you jumped up.
Yeah.
Seventeen thousand people watched you ride that bike?
No, that's September, uh, in August, seventeen thousand people watched. No, that's September. Uh, in August, seventeen thousand people watched us do something. Yeah.
I have another question. When, um, how are we going to learn about what came out of the staff strategic planning meeting?
We're gonna discuss that in. Yeah. They, I'm gonna be honest, the staff rocked it, uh, in terms of vision, values, mission, purpose, scope, all of those things for the library. And I, I think they've done a lot of the work for you. Um, they just.
They took it serious.
They took it seriously. Um, they're, they're, they're brilliant, compassionate, passionate, thoughtful, wonderful human beings who genuinely care about this community and this library. And it, it shows in how they thought, um, critically about what they see as the future of the library, but also how the library will get there. So I, I do wanna say that they, they rocked it, right? I mean, it was hard. I mean, I fed them clockmans and everybody was kind of in a little bit of a food coma, but, uh, they rallied and really just, great job.
Are we gonna have clockmans for ours?
Yeah.
It's dinner time.
I need you clockman.
I second the motion.
And so that, that is, that is all the, uh, all the reports from the director. Oh, and they, the SCLS trustee caucus. So each year, um, not each year, but, uh, just at CLS, which is the Suffolk Cooperative Library System, uh, not the Suffolk County Library System. We are all standalone libraries. Uh, we belong to a cooperative system to share services, uh, much like, uh, the library has a board here, representative of trustees of the community. The Suffolk Cooperative Library System has a board with representatives from each zone. There are five zones. Uh, Zone One, the North Port and South Port actually have two reps because we're so large, a North Port rep and South Port rep. Joanne Rabati, who is the current, uh, I believe she's the current SCLS Board President, um, is terming out. She is from Shelter Island. She cannot run again. And so they are looking for an individual to represent the South Port Libraries on the SCLS Board. I did ask Bill McCoy, uh, if it would be something he would consider. I have not heard back from him. Uh, but it, it is something, um, you know, you think of somebody who might be a, a good choice for that, um, certainly let me know. And if you have any questions, I can serve me up.
What is, what are the responsibilities?
So the responsibilities of the SCLS, um, trustees is similar to the responsibilities of a library trustee. So fiduciary responsibility, policy, um, if there are personnel issues at SCLS, they, they would take care of that. Um, and so really also to just be a representative of the, the zone with which they, they represent.
Um, and.
Do they meet monthly?
They meet monthly on the first Wednesday of the month. They meet at the Suffolk Cooperative Library System. But, no.
They do serve better snacks though.
They, no snacks. So somebody who used to go to those meetings as the PLBA president, no, no.
Bank time, say.
Nine, seven P M. Seven P M, no snack.
Just so as.
That's there, it's angry time.
So when would the new term start?
The new term starts, um, I believe on that little piece of paper. Let me check it.
That's an appointed position?
It is not appointed. It's elected. You have to be elected. By, who votes? The trustees of the libraries in that cell. So the term runs January eighth, twenty twenty-five to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. Um, and the caucus is Monday, October twenty-first at four forty-five at the Rogers Memorial Library. So, there's that.
Absentee that.
Um, when is the election?
The election is done by, um, paper ballot. So once the, after the caucus happens and they do the election, I usually get something in the mail from Kevin. And, um, then we vote at a meeting.
When was the last time someone said, Robert?
Um, it's been Joanne Rabati for the last six years. Before that, it was.
Was his husband ever part of that?
I, that I don't know. Um, before Joanne Rabati, it was a fellow named Mike Lennon, who was, um, from West Hampton. And he held the position for six years. So that's twelve years. I don't remember who it was before Mike Lennon.
Only one rep in the side?
Well, I did ask Phil and he did seem intrigued about that. It does not have to be a person from that harbor. Please also note that it's the East Hampton, Southampton, East Hampton Town, Southampton Town and Shelter Island, um, district. So other library directors are having the same conversation with their.
Can we conspire together and ring the bell?
I.
I don't know. I'm just curious as to whether they.
Generally speaking.
When they say, okay, it's Shelter Island's turn, it's Stanford's turn, it's their harbor's turn.
Uh, there have been, generally speaking, um, it's not a contested election within these service areas. I can't, however, recently it has been a contested election in a couple of different zones.
Not in this zone.
Not in Zone One. We would not want to. I mean, we could, but.
No, I'm just curious if, you know, because we work cooperatively together. So it'd be nice to get a different viewpoint every election cycle, or but long the term lasts. You know, and you go around robbing, you know, something of that nature. So you get a different viewpoint that's not monopolized by any one particular library or community.
Problem with that is if there isn't somebody who wants to do it originally, it's that region's turn, so you kind of get skipped.
Well, you can, then you can pass. If you could just say, all right, then you just go on to the next one. But that way we're all, you know, vested in what's going on.
So that's.
Bill McCoy is a good choice.
Yes, I hope he says yeah.
Yeah.
I'm gonna shake him up. Remind him, we had a conversation, cornered him at Harbor Fest, so I'm gonna remind him that I cornered him at Harbor Fest. Um, so, that is, that is, um, so if you guys could approve the personnel report, Ezra.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the personnel report. I'll second you.
On favor.
I.
All righty, committees, personnel.
Personnel, I was not there. My apologies. So, filing, no trial. So.
Well, I'll report if I have personnel because I was there. So we made you the employee handbook. We made some edits and had some valuable discussions. So the document is ready to go, we sent to, um, Colombo's. But you know, I do have a question. That doesn't go into the bylaws.
No.
Oh, okay. Because when I was going through the bylaws today, I saw some things that were repeated. There were some personnel issue.
Right.
Parts in there. Would that, would those need to come out?
No.
Everything stays?
Everything stays.
Okay, yeah.
It's good. It's not, it's not a public document, is it?
No.
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 It's not something we have to.
Well, here's the thing. It, it is.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, it is, because all, we are required by New York State law to have all of our policies published on our website.
So it will eventually be on the website.
It will eventually be on the website once it's completely edited and the board adopts it. The plan is for.
The employee handbook is considered a policy?
All of the personnel policies are now in the employee handbook. So the employee handbook will be approved by the board as a whole and all of the policies within it as one document rather than you all approving every single policy separately.
Uh, and there's, there's not a problem with that name of the code. There's nothing in there that shouldn't be that one.
So I was gonna say, I think it reflects well on the library. I mean, I think it's a very responsible looking.
Yes.
And, and it makes an attractive presentation to people who might be thinking about a job.
Right.
Yeah, right.
It's more professional. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so that's what happened to personnel. I thought, nice little snack, you should have.
Heard the trailmen.
But Dan only liked the potatoes.
And if Danny ate all the potatoes.
The potatoes. Oh.
Well, no.
I'm sorry.
Stuck his fingers in the.
Shaking around to get it out of the corner of the throat. Okay, finance, budget.
Okay, uh, we, we've met virtually quite a bit over the last month because we've been doing a bunch of stuff. We've already talked about a couple of items, which are these new accounts. But the other, uh, uh, big news from the committee is that we had a big reinvestment on the fifth of September. We had seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars worth of T-bills that, uh, had matured. And we did get a decent rate, four point one one nine for the next twelve months. We pushed the whole thing ahead by, for a year. Uh, so next September, we're gonna get eight hundred and, it'll be eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, thirty-seven thousand dollars profit in that piece, which is great, you know. Rock Elliot. This is, this is, you know, this is the last time we're gonna get a T-bill rate over four. Like yesterday, it went down to three nine nine and, you know, the Fed made some actions today, which will probably cause it to drop lower. But that's part of the reason we are experimenting with other ways of depositing money. But the problem is, T-bill is the only thing so far that, you know, we've been able to identify that is totally safe and will absorb a lot of money. You know, you, you, otherwise you have to put two fifty into different, that, all these different banks, you know, to get a decent rate. Um, the Morgan Stanley thing happened to be, they, they gave us up, uh, up to five hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
Covered by FDIC because there's two banks involved. And, and, but, you know, and for an account like that, where we're gonna be managing large chunks of money, but, but we can't go, it can't never get higher than five hundred thousand, it won't be insured. So we'll just keep replenishing it right up to that level until we get the project done. But anyway, the important thing about the, the big reinvestment that we did is it means that all the way through now September of next year, uh, we will have, you know, this chunk of money that you see on, on the report, the form, the, the, uh, three, three, just under four million dollars in investments. That number is not going to go down. Uh, we're not gonna be taking anything out of that. No, we're not. We're gonna take, we're not gonna take anything out of that pot for a long time now. And, and it's invested at a good rate. That's all I'm saying. So throughout most of next year, now, uh, eventually we're gonna see it taper a little bit, because we're not gonna be able to get as high rates in the future, probably. But, you know, but for the immediate future, you know, through, through next fall, we're in good shape.
Can you tell me that amount again, the, the amount that was reinvested?
Oh, it was, was three, seven eighty-eight. And then it will become eight twenty-five. So you'll start to see that this will start to show up, because this is, uh, expected capital gains that will start to show up in our reports as early as next month. Yeah.
Okay, B and G.
Uh, we did not meet, but there's a lot going on in B and G. We will be discussing under old business.
Policy and long range. Um, I see it's also an old business, but I, should I just go for it now or do you want to go for old business?
Let's do it now.
Okay, we did meet. And if you look at old business, you will see that on Monday, October twenty-first, at six P M, we are able to have this major planning meeting that's the entire board. This is our end of, remember when we did the, um, last year, when it'd be, um, when we trained, board retreat. When I had R S B. Oh, that's what I remember about it the most. Um, they said we were maybe due to to have another one in a year where we can bring together the long range plan. The survey is done. And did you distribute the survey to everyone? So all the survey results have been distributed and I have a chance to.
I will redistribute, I've distributed them a long time ago. I will redistribute them. And then I will also redistribute, I will distribute to all of you, um, as a, a page from a strategic planning handbook that I have explaining values, missions, strategic goals, all of those things. Um, and then also while I'm looking at it, um, I dirked on the, uh,
Dirk.
Dirk. On the agenda, the strategic planning work session and the nominating committee are supposed to be under new business, not old business.
Okay, okay.
Um, so.
Are we doing that here? Where are we doing that?
We're, we're going to do that here.
Yep.
Um, it would fall under a work session. Uh, so because the board will be here and working, it is a public meeting. Um, so if people wish to attend, that they could at a work session, uh, there is no need for public expression.
Advertise that.
But we do have to post that we are having a special meeting.
So the public can come, but they can't.
There's no, there's no participation. Um, and there is no, I mean, technically for work sessions, you're not passing any resolutions.
We, we are, because we are, we're gonna be getting the ideas, Kelly's gonna facilitate. And we're going to get the basis for a long range plan. And then the, um, policy and long range planning committee will meet and finalize a proposal for everyone. You'll review it November, November, have the final vote, probably in December, and we will have a long range.
The long range plan?
I know, the long range plan. So one thing I will email later, but one thing I would like everybody to think of that is, um, when we had the meeting last year, we talked about how the parts of a, of a long range plan, one of them is a mission. That's a short sentence, kind of an idea of what encapsulates, um, the library, when you guys were talking during the, um, forum. I can't, you guys all said some, the Center for Learning and Living, the Center, the Center of South Harbor's Community. Those are all the types of mission statements. So if everybody can think about mission statements, that would be great to come to the meeting in October with, with that kind of in your, written down or something. So we kept a place to start. The other thing is to go over what you consider the strengths, weaknesses, challenges and opportunities for the libraries. And that is looking at the survey. That's where the survey is gonna really offer things. The staff survey that also offered things. Um, and then any priorities people have, um, that we can, so if we have, if everybody does that to work ahead of time, we can make our meaning together more. Yeah.
And will that, will that information be available through a central repository somewhere that is gonna be easily accessible for us to look at?
I'll put it all in a Google Drive for you if you'd like.
I would.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll be good.
Yeah. And I can email, um, the, um, and what the homework is.
All right.
So, um, and that is, that is what policy and long range.
If you can email it and a Word document, then I'll dump that Word document into the Google Drive.
Okay.
Okay. Um.
All right. I will reach in public relations.
And well, we met and mainly the discussion was about the annual appeal. Um, sorry. And, um, it was discussed that, um, we should send an appeal letter to a specific target audience rather than an email to everybody. And that would include like previous donors, adult library cardholders, people like that. Um, Kelly suggested calling it the Library Trustees Annual Appeal, not the Library Appeal. And, um, the board president will be writing a letter and, um, including things about what the accomplishments were this year for the library. Uh, like, well, uh, the, the number of programs, offering themselves to programs. Um, then focus the letter on new things the library wants to offer the public and purchase, um, like increasing the adult programming as was requested on the survey. Um, digitization of the archives and this kitchen à la carte idea. Um.
Excellent. What sport that?
Kitchen à la carte is the most of that.
What is that?
Um, it is a mobile. Um it is a mobile cooking station, if you will. It's, there's two different um versions. Uh I forgot what the other one is named because kitchen à la carte is just chef's kiss. Uh pun intended. Um it's basically a kitchen, but in a cart. It comes with. Measure spoons and bowls and sets for, I think, like twelve. Um but it also has like a convection cooktop, a small refrigerator. Potable potable water, yes, for use in the library so that we can do more cooking demonstrations and cooking classes. Um as um some of you may know, we've been doing a lot of team cooking classes, which um the teens are really into. We've made dips, we've made pasta salad. Um we did a wanted it spice rub program. Uh we, people really like when we do food programs. Uh we have several staff members with food handlers licenses so that we can do that. Uh and this kitchen cart just gives us a little more flexibility in what it is that we can do. As well as provides a display space and then like, you know, a sink with hot water so we can wash our hands um after we touch like raw meat.
I have to tell you, when you do a cooking demonstration, like I'm in like on a Thursday night and there's one going on, it's permeating to the whole building.
It's nice, right?
Fabulous.
Yeah.
You can have it during the board meetings.
Yes. Um. It's I'm gonna say. We should have a food handlers license if we're providing food to the public and so we do.
Good, that's.
Yeah. Because we want to make sure that everything is at proper temperatures and stored properly and we don't want anyone to to get sick.
Well, I know the food programs that I think too, okay. Everybody shows up. It's made a big comeback since.
I'm sorry, Robin. The uh courtyard.
We could, because the cart moves.
Have like a barbecue.
Sorry, Robin, I interrupted your.
Last couple of things is just that um this letter that Diane will be writing, yeah, it should be out before November first. Um but after the budget for vote. And that board members should include personal notes on letters to people they know. And the committee will be asking the trustees to help envelope stuff, envelope stuffing and stamping. For for the appeal.
You can see the letters.
And you can see the. So and write the note.
Yeah, can can you print a list of?
We will print a list.
Nailing this.
Yeah.
So we're Nancy, she's on vacation this week, but she's gonna work on with Ellie on um doing a batch upload of um. Library cardholders, new library cardholders. Um and then we just have to go through and sort of um make sure that. You know, we don't send um husbands and wives or partners who are at the same address, two of them, right? We want to make sure we get every, you know, where we're conscientious in how many letters we're we're sending out and we're not sending multiple.
And how will people, sorry, I wasn't here last year. Do you people, can people donate it online?
So people will be able to, we can point people to our website to donate via PayPal. Uh but we'll go in there as an appeal card, uh where people can give us their credit card information if they don't want to go through PayPal. Um and then we can also do um. Cash donations if somebody wants to write me a check. And we also want to encourage individuals who work for companies that do a matching donation to sort of double their dollars. Uh and reach out to their their employers that that have those matching grant programs.
Great. This should be part of an overall coordinated effort.
Yeah.
You know, it's not just a single donation drive or anything like that. It should be an ongoing type of uh thing that we should be doing. And there are other organizations, other libraries. If you look at the website, the New York Public Library, they have a phenomenal. It it goes on for like six, seven pages. And they have personal, they have uh donors who are actually giving a video appeals. Um to, you know, their donor base and it's really very, very effective.
Do we have the capability to do monthly gifts? Like in in the whatever system.
Actually do that for PayPal.
Oh, you can?
Yeah, for PayPal, you can choose to make a monthly.
Yeah.
That's that's. Doing that, right? Ten dollars a month, five dollars a month.
And return, you'll get a say of of.
Get it, I'm the.
I think I'm. Now, in return, you get a library card, which gives you access to everything in this building.
That's right.
Mash Park. But before I talk about the park, David Segares is going to be at Guild Hall on October fifth. Have you ever heard him? I love him. I've read everything he has.
He's great, man.
Mash Park, where you know, they had the um five K raise and over four hundred participants. Double year before, so it raised them.
Just beautiful day.
Nice. And the um locker room, whatever, has been restored and it's up and running. It's like behind the grandstand. And his bathroom's not at work. So this way, visiting teams have a facility, the players have a facility there. Okay, ad hoc scholarship.
Um you you all met.
We met, but.
You met, but we discussed.
Okay, okay, okay. Okay, we discussed, I don't know if everybody remembers that the donor. For the scholarship asked the library if he could place a sculpture on the grounds of the library and the committee. Came to the agreement that it's not a good idea. We don't have the space, the capacity for it. But we could offer him a chance to exhibit his work in the library, maybe show some small sculptures up in the rotunda.
I'm a temporary.
Temporary, yeah.
The point is that we we can't have an ongoing.
Yes.
Yeah. Opportunity to exhibit.
Yeah.
Um. I don't want to get started on my next sculpture. There's a lot of liability with that. So that said, were you gonna get back to?
I did get back to him. I have not heard back from him.
Maybe you don't need to. Okay, so um because this committee realizes that it has a lot of work to do to still get word out to the community the scholarship exists and um. So try to do that.
That'll that'll be something for the committee to work on.
Right.
In January.
Yes.
Get. Uh responses from places that we thought we would, so we have to. Okay, um so much for committee, this old business.
Okay.
Age.
H P.
The HVAC. So um I printed some stuff out for y'all, all y'all. Um the one thing I do want you to look at is that last page. Um so I had met with um Chad um. And James from from um Train, who are not personally, but they're the the folks um from Train, our equipment is Train Equipment. Um and I also met at that time with Patrick from Lizardos, John McCooly, our um consultant was there. And we just um sort of boots on the ground, we looked at the sound study. Um and the recommendations from the original sound study on um what we had to implement and make sure that things fit in the space as it's supposed to fit. Because as you all know, we want to be good neighbors. Um one of the things that Chad had mentioned, oh, he's a salesman, uh he's a sales guy. Uh was that if we paid ahead of time, there would be a discount um just for giggles. Uh I said, why don't you give me that number? Just so you know, we are not required to pay for the equipment until the equipment is. Uh built and onsite and ready to come to the library. Um so basically, the discount would be about eleven thousand dollars. What I am going to tell Chad, if the board is okay with it, is that's not enough as a discount. We can make more money.
Thank you.
On the interest.
It's only like two percent.
I wanted to give you all the um the numbers, uh just so you have those.
To get a discount, how far in advance do you have to pay?
To if we paid it in like in full borrow, that would be the discount, uh which is not enough with the discount. Um so but, you know, in the interest of giving you all the information, there is all the.
Ask him for twenty-five.
I know. I was like, really? We can do better.
Kelly, ask him for twenty-five.
Ask him for twenty-five?
Yeah.
Might.
Wholesale.
I might ask him for a hundred. Uh no, um. So that is that. That's the easy part. Um. The more complicated part is as a result of the additional um. Uh uh sound attenuation, uh which was recommended uh that we are going to have as part of the. Uh HVAC project, the location of the equipment had to shift a little bit um in order to make room for um. The the additional stuff. So Chad, not Chad, Sean, um. Had reruns the sound numbers to make sure that we were still uh well within where we are supposed to be. We are still within village limits. Um which we are. I also at that time asked him to address some of the neighbors' concerns. Um because I did. So I just want to go back to our letter from our neighbors. Um which is.
The ideas.
The ideas, um.
Page forty-seven.
Page forty-five. Um so their concerns um are to basically um. Their issues are the sound study was not done with remediation, therefore they don't know what the impact would be.
All right, what if, I'm sorry, what is, what do you mean by mediation?
The, so the the sound remediation. So I'm just gonna go through um their concerns real quick with you and then we'll talk about the sound study. So um they are. Their issues are that the sound study was not done with the mitigation and therefore they have no idea what the sound impact will be. The original sound study was done with with the the mitigation. Uh the sound study does not take into account the home's location and reverberation. The sound study that I provided for them and SoundSense gave to us did um include that. They have multiple bedrooms on second and third floor um with rooftop at door depth, which have direct sight of the structure. Um proposed structure is very close to the lot line with no real barrier. Um and then the pro- proposed structure is large and represents a potential barriers. So they are respectfully requesting that the library complete another sound study with SoundSense from the property line at multiple points of concern. Ahead of any final plant plant site review and voting. Um and that we put that request in front of the board and the planning committee. Um and to provide them other information. Um I did let them know when the planning board meeting was. Um and so that's sort of where we were at. So I spoke with um. Tiffany, I spoke with Sean at SoundSense. He provided an additional letter. Um Sean was. Sean and Tiffany were both pretty clear. Um. There is no reason for us to do an additional sound study. The sound study as it sits answers the questions that they they are concerned about. Um we fall at worst case scenario, which is all of the units running at a hundred percent capacity. We fall what below um the village uh code. Um which is in that sound study. Uh but he did provide um this second um report. Uh which takes into account the slight shift in the structure um. To make sure that we are still within those codes, which which we are. Um and so he's also responding to the the neighbors' concerns. So again, we're completely in code. Uh when I sat and spoke with uh Ms. Ivy. Um she had indicated that, and she also indicated that in her letter, that she is concerned about the roof deck, the second floor, the property line. Um and so this study speaks to that. Again, we are well within code at a hundred percent. Um capacity, again, a hundred percent capacity is the worst case scenario. What this study also, this follow-up report also states is that the manufacturer of the equipment does not provide sound information. For the equipment running at reduced capacity, it is not something manufacturers of equipment of this size and this application provide. And so because that information is not available from the manufacturer. Sean cannot do the acoustical math to give a average day sort of what it's going to sound like. So that's just simply information that cannot be provided.
But he's providing a ceiling.
It's providing a ceiling. Yes, you're providing.
So that's that's that's.
Once, once you're in, once, when we have the equipment in, are we going to come, we come back and just do a follow-up with that like after it's been running for a while or are we just gonna let it go?
We don't have, I mean, if they, I mean, here's the thing, if we're within code, if something arises where we're out of code, then we would want to run an additional sound study.
If somebody thinks that they may be out of code, then they.
Let them do it. Let them pay for it. Let them do the study.
I know, I just.
So.
We're in code, that's it.
I'm gonna let you, um we're gonna go to page four of this study. Um and so uh what Sean has very nicely done is just put in response comment to the neighbor. Um the sound study was not done with remediation. Both the acoustic report and this acoustic memo take mitigation measures recommended in the acoustic report and integrated it into the site plan. Uh sound study does not take into account the location. The analysis completed do take into account the location and reverberation. Um they have multiple bedrooms. This document has already addressed these comments directly. The third floor rooftop is not anticipated to have a direct line of sight to the mechanical equipment directly. Even if there was a direct line of sight, the resulting sound levels are predicted to be compliant with code. With regard to second floor bedrooms, the sound levels are compliant, considering that there is no exterior deck in these locations. And considering the five decibel loss inside an open window um as set by uh New York State D E C's assessing and mitigating noise impacts. The proposed structure is very close to our lot line. This is the one that we're going to talk about a little more. The analysis shows that the additional acoustic barrier is not necessary. But an additional acoustic barrier is not necessary, but could be another mitigation me- measure considered by the neighbor or the library to provide further acoustic reduction. But here we are. We are below code without an additional barrier. So what would an additional barrier look like and do? An additional barrier would be a fence, a sound blanket and another fence, sort of all like a sandwich, but this way. What that would do would mitigate the sound by seven decibels, which is significant, but only. In the driveway. It would not affect sound. So just at that property line, it would not affect sound heard at any of the other.
Not the rooftop.
Not the rooftop.
So just if you're standing in your driveway, ground level.
In your driveway, whereas ground level, you would have a reduction in sound. Now, what it would also include, it is a fence, a sound blanket, a fence. We would also have to landscape that as well. So it would require additional landscaping because the landscaping is also needed because there could be potential reverberation between the two fences. Um it is a. It is a cost. It would be a significant cost because again, you're talking about expensive materials, hairlines, what is what my offense is done. Um but the sound lighting is not cheap. The landscaping would not be cheap. And I'm not convinced at this point there is any true return on investment in. Doing that now, um, as we fall below code.
Would that, we'd also have to go back before the ZBA, for, you know, for the, the board because of the aesthetics. Too, right, which.
Landscaping plans and.
Yeah, and it's, and I mean, here's the, it's. It's sort of not necessary, um, it's something we can talk about. Down, down the road, I did speak, um, I had a brief email with. With Tiffany, um. Who said that, um. You know, her sort of feeling is. We don't need to go there until we need to go there, that's sort of, uh, was Sean's sense as well, that was my gut reaction. Because it's not really solving a problem, right? I mean, it is, but it's not, it's not.
You know, dissuaging the land, it's dissuaging the neighbors, but it's not.
It is, but it's, it's not assuasion, assuasion the neighbors in a. In a necessarily meaningful way.
It's not influencing any of these things.
It's not any of the points where, where they're.
But that's gonna significantly delay. Because we'd have to go back to square one and go through the whole process and we're not gonna be able to get that all done in the time frame that we need to get done.
And the reality of the situation is at this point in time. We are well within code. We are well within code, we have worked very hard to be well within code. We have delayed getting our plans to the ARB because we have proceeded to shift. This piece of equipment to take into account the sound mitigation as presented in the first sound study. I feel that we have been. Really diligent in doing the absolute best we can for. Our neighbors in making sure that this equipment is, is as quiet as possible, um, but I. That's, that's sort of where, where we are at.
Can we go into executive session to discuss a legal matter?
We can, if somebody wants to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss a legal matter.
I'd like to.
Right now?
Executive session right now to discuss a legal matter relating, relating to this.
Alright, I'll make the motion to go into executive session.
Okay, hold on, um, so we have six fifty-four, we have Michael and we have Dan. Resumer. There we go. So we are back from executive session at seven oh six P M, who made that motion?
I made the motion to be out of executive session.
All second.
Okay. And so, um, to, to simply end the. Well, we don't have to vote, um, everybody was in favor, I just need it for the. Welcome back, community members. So everybody, everybody feels good?
Thank you.
Alright, so we already talked about under new business, um, the workshop on October twenty-first. I just need a mo, I should have put a star there too, sorry guys. Didn't my editing work, yeah, um, I need a motion to, um. Set a work session for that date because we're adding a meeting to the calendar.
This is October twenty-one.
October twenty, Monday, October twenty-first.
I'll make a motion to add that.
Um, and so. Nominated.
Nominated, maybe, okay.
Which I went back to the bylaws and we have to do it by October, so. Okay.
So, um.
Is this weird, this is this, the, who's gonna be on the committee to nominate the things or is this going to be the?
This is the nominating committee for officers for twenty twenty-five. Okay, so, um, since Anne is an outgoing trustee, she will be on the committee. I will be leading the committee and, um. One other person should be on the committee.
Sure.
Um, and we have to, um. Have a brief meeting.
And we'll have the slate for the October meeting?
Yes.
I'll be there.
Alright, and we're joined clock, but everybody's comfortable at twelve o'clock?
Sure.
They have chicken feed.
Actually.
Have you done knockdog yet? That is.
So good.
It's right, it's right in that little where the UPS used to be.
It's like soy. But they're, it's really good.
But they have all the traditional toppings, so you get like all these outrageous.
I will reach out about food, hot dogs or not talks, um. Afterwards, so we don't have to waste public meeting time on.
Okay, so, um, here we are for a new business.
We already did. That was actually the new business.
Okay, so we can move on to, uh, period of for public expression, anything you want to say back there? Okay, um, oh.
Oh, also I left that on there, we don't need to talk about that.
I make a motion to. Seven twelve, I make the motion to adjourn at seven twelve P M.
No, thank you, everyone.